I'd like to call to order, please, the City Council Work Session, Monday, May 6. And we're all around the table and all are present. So agendas, items for discussion is 3.1, Brian Dawkey and Terri Canada. We'll review the fiscal year 2013-14 draft budget plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We will be going through the draft budget and we'll go through the process of how we got here and where we're headed from here as well. But a couple of things I want to just start off is, as we go through a summary, I think it's important to talk about the framework that we went through and as well as some of the highlights of the proposed budget. So that's our goal tonight. When I turn it over to Terri, she will be going through a little more detail with the 13-14 fiscal year budget. And that will be the operating budget, the CIP.
Bless you.
I feel blessed. And overview of the debt as well. Then finally, we want to wrap up of the next steps. There will be, you know, the budget is a process. And our process continues on to the final act, which will be the tax levy, and that actually happens in July. So the next planned step after tonight, and this again is draft budget, so it means we're getting very close. But what it also means is that when we hit tentative budget adoption, when the council considers that on May the 20th, all that does is that sets your upper expenditure limit. So at that point, you cannot adopt a higher budget than what you adopt on May 20th. You will have an opportunity between then and when final is adopted in June for any tweaking and some of those types of elements. But it is, we're getting close, a lot closer. One of the things, and I was reflecting on this, is that there's been a lot of work. This has started in November with council talking about tax policy to several work sessions, to obviously a lot of work behind the scenes with our very talented staff. But just a reflection of how much teamwork this has taken to get it to this point, and appreciate our employees or as well as the council in the interactive approach, because at the end of the day, this is a big policy decision on the part of council. So on the budget framework, you're right on target. On the budget framework, I want to go through a couple of those items. One is, is if you look at it, the box on the left is really the responsibilities to the taxpayers. So when we look at that, we take that seriously. And we maintain and have maintained a conservative approach on this budget, especially based on the uncertain economic conditions. We also have held the line on while we maintain the services and really trying to maintain the high quality of service that we provide and the quality of life ultimately for our citizens, we have tried to keep this still very lean while preserving the quality of life issues. But it's uncertain. You know, one of the things we want to talk about is while we're cautiously optimistic, any day you pick up the paper, it's mostly good news now, but there's still some not so good. And we know at the national level, some of the uncertainty we're faced with is unsteady customer confidence. That word called sequestration is still out there that's unresolved. What impacts may that have? And really, that's undetermined, including the traffic control tower that's being looked at for being closed at the airport itself. So what we're seeing and hearing and reading is it's an overall cautious approach. The economy is improving, but it is not running out of the gate by any stretch of imagination at this point. The other part at the state level is there is a heavy reliance on the state for their sales tax. And some of the things that are going on is their temporary tax actually sunsets on May 31st, so that affects them. There have been, there was also legislation that has a tax proposition that limited assessed valuation growth. So that will impact cities in terms of the revenues that we would receive. And then finally, on the governor's Transaction Privilege Tax Simplification Task Force, that is a long word, but essentially what that does is it does three things, well, several, but it's only three of those that the cities have issue with. First one is how you do your sales tax audits, who collects them. And then finally, the last part that has a significant impact on this city is a potential impact of taking away or coming up with a different way of doing construction sales tax. And that's $6 million to us projected for next year. So if that goes to a different type of approach as far as how that is paid, it can have some very, very significant impacts on us. So as we consider these factors, it is, this does go into the budget considerations. And that's why when we were with council this past November, we actually talked about tax policy direction. That isn't the end-all-be-all at that point, but that really helped give us a direction as far as how to approach this. And on the revenue projections that we had in November, we're actually pretty close to what we came up, came back to council with in March. So we feel like it's what we looked at in November when we originally got the tax policy direction is still holding fairly true today. Now, that doesn't mean that council can't change tax policy. You have that right. Matter of fact, you'll be setting the tax levy in July as well. So kind of the bottom line of the framework, we've maintained our conservative estimates. We are, but we've done some other things as part of that. We kept the city staffing levels at 511. I would tell you that the last time that, it was in 2010-11 when council authorized 511, we've stayed the same. And while we've only grown about five, close to 6,000 residents, we have not increased the number of employees that provide the services. We've moved some positions around within that, but we've stayed there. But some of the things that we're faced with, while we kept the staffing levels at 511, we've had increased costs. We've had increased costs for utilities, gas, water, personnel items such as healthcare, which of course was talked about tonight. We have equipment replacement that we have to deal with, technology replacement, and how do we keep the city safe, clean, safe with public safety, clean in terms of code compliance and some of those elements that we have to maintain. When we, the other, I haven't really talked about this to date, but we're at 7.2 employees per thousand. I remember back in the earlier 2000s when we were well over 10. So that gradually as the employee, the residents grow, obviously the employee count per capita, per thousand drops because we have not been adding. But I thought that was an important consideration as well. Some of the things that we've done, so those are the efficiencies we've come up with. We've restructured some city departments. We've talked about that previously. And that has helped us to really try and hold costs down as well as create efficiencies. This council's adopted a strategic action plan. Can't tell you how important that is for us as we go into this budget and really tying the supplementals and tying the policies to the strategic action plan. Finally, on the results is very important. We take a lot of pride in what we provide, the service levels we provide to the citizens. We'll have an opportunity this year, latter part of this calendar year, to hear from our citizens again. How are we doing? What would they like to see? And when we get those results back, we actually convert those to actions for consideration by this council. We're putting more emphasis as well on growing the healthy economy. We are at a great point right now where we feel like there's a lot of energy in the development community, not just residential, but also on the commercial side, industrial side. So we're putting additional resources for the Development Services Department to be more aggressive. And there are several projects underway that, you know, if we, if they start making an announcement soon, we'll, we're waiting, but we do know that there's some in the wings. And then finally, performance measures. What gets measured gets done. We've talked about this before, but very quickly. We're working with ICMA on their standards, International City County Managers Association. So we are looking at some of their performance measures. We are, we've been accepted. We actually kind of bullied our way into Alliance for Innovation to be part of a Valley Benchmark. Metro Phoenix, 10 different cities that are comparing data to see how we stack up against each other. Sounds easy. The challenge is making sure that even with those cities, we're apples of apples, but that's going to help us figure out how we're performing. We've got a bit of an attitude in that we want to be high performers and we want to look at the information just to make sure that we feel like we're doing a great job. And then, and finally, our own departments are looking at performance measures as well. So all of that is really getting us to a point where we think that we're doing, doing a great job as far as the budget framework and how we're headed. Opportunities and challenges. Already talked a little bit about economic development. Regional partnerships and solutions. This is one where, yes, we're providing fire service to Litchfield Park, but we want to look at what other cities, what can we do? Anything from other water regional solutions to wastewater to different activities, different agencies. That stretches our resources and that can really help us to take the dollars farther. Workforce planning. Along those lines, we are doing succession planning. We're doing the human capital plan. So the investment in our greatest asset, internal greatest asset are employees. We're actually looking at how we can do that. And then technology, it costs money to stay, well, we're behind the times in a couple of our areas and we don't plan to stay there. We will be doing upgrades to our website. That'll make it a lot more user-friendly to our citizens. We'll look at social media. We'll look at enterprise system replacement. So that's a software background that really helps us to manage resources, dollars, people, activities. So we are looking at that as well. Our challenges, water. Water resources is a challenge while not insurmountable. It's costly. You will be hearing more on that, but those are challenges as we continue to grow that we have to keep our eye on. And those, and we're addressing some of that in this coming year's budget. Already talked about aging fleet and equipment. You need to replace equipment when it gets to that point and we just have to build that into the budget as long as we stay up with that. I've talked about the website and then we don't know yet what's coming out of three plans, three significant plans that we have our citizens involved in the general plan, the transportation plan, and the Parks Master Plan as well. There may be initiatives or recommendations or priorities set there that we don't know what those outcomes are. Will it translate to desire for more service or higher service levels, more capital investment? We don't know yet. But those are unknowns. That's a challenge and we just need to, when those come in, we'll have an opportunity to really look at how to address those. Those will be completed really as we, Kim gave me some great notes and I don't have them in front of me, but I want to say the first one is completed in January. They'll be started to be completed next year. And then the general plan ultimately has to be adopted or voted on by our public and that will be in fall of 2014. So those are in front of us. Finally, the draft budget. We are, the draft budget is based on the tax policy rates that are in place right now and the structures. We have included contingency levels as the council's directed us. We are now down to looking at a three-month, three-month period to where we can draw down our contingency or what we call a rainy day. And so that, we'll drop that down, but we're not having to add to that amount. We're staying at $16.3 million. I think that'll actually be later in the presentation. Total budget, 6% over fiscal '13. So, and a lot of that is tied to $5 million in the capital budget and another $6 million one-time funds over in the operations for a total of $11 million.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Sure. Total budget is $205 million. It's a 6% increase over last year's. And $11 million of that is due to $5 million in the capital improvement projects and another $6 million for operating use of one-time funds in the operating category for all funds.
So in summary, your bulk is those one-time monies and capital projects, which makes up that 6%?
That's the bulk of that, yes. And then capital improvement budget is $12.4 million and that will be, Terri will be going through that in a little more detail. But that includes the master plan implementations I referenced earlier, as well as some improvements that we feel like we need to do to facilities. And then lastly, focus on our core. We are in the service business. Focus on our strategic priorities and results. We will continue to enhance, increase our level of communications internally, externally, our street maintenance. You know, one of the things that is important is you have that asset that you have to take care of. If you don't treat it, maintain it, then you're digging up the streets at a lot higher cost. So it's what can we do to preserve the roads that we have in place right now. Public safety support services, you're seeing, we're seeing some additional enhancements and resources there as well. And then finally, supplementals for the Development Services Group. And that isn't just, the economic development includes building safety. We are maintaining a temporary inspector. Our building inspections are increasing. And then code compliance, we're putting additional resources behind that as well. So those are the primarily, some of the key points we're looking at. And, oh, I see. Couple other points, just real quickly, is I wanted to point out that the focus areas that the council has developed for us and adopted in the strategic action plan is really four things. It is fiscal and resource management, so that's dollars and people. It's the economic vitality, so that's the health of our existing businesses plus recruitment of new. It's a sense of community that council's established, having events, place-making, what can we do there? And then finally, quality of life, that is public safety and it is keeping the community safe. So those are the four key priority areas, focus areas that we've integrated into this budget. I would just lastly say that we had a public meeting last Wednesday. All these are public meetings, let me rephrase that. It was a presentation by management to the public and we, it was very slightly attended, but it was an opportunity for the public-
I know you don't want to say how slightly, but as a mayor, I'm going to say it because, you know, we will get emails about people said that we weren't transparent, didn't get the budget out, didn't get it early enough out, didn't get all that. Well, we did, and we've started that. And I believe with the candidates that were running, I think there were three, three citizens in the audience. So, and the rest was, no, one came later than I think of. I think he came in later, maybe not, but okay, one person. But I have to count, we had our news media there, that's another person. He was listening to it. Okay, so I gave you, Mr. Yantis, I gave you the credit there. So I did count three people in the room that I could say that, you know, weren't sitting around the table with all of us. So I just want to make that known to the press as well to the public, that we have begun, and this is important, and the people that are the critics of our city, which is Democrats, I love democracy, that's part of it, but I just want them to know that we have began this with being very clear on our goals and the direction we're going. Sorry.
Appreciate that, because the intent of that is, is it was one to present, you know, some of what I've gone through tonight, but it was another for the public to ask us questions. And so we were available for questions. We had our directors here. We are available after the presentation and there was dialogue with individual afterwards that really wanted to learn more about the budget. So, point being is we, yeah, we spent time to make sure the public was given an opportunity. So with that, Mayor and Council, it's my privilege to turn this over to our budget manager, Terri Canada.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to take a minute to go through the calendar tonight because we are getting to the legal requirements. And actually, tonight, we're going to review, this is the culmination of the other work sessions that we've had that started in April. We had a session reviewed general fund revenue projections in quite detail. We also went through the expenditures on 4/15. We reviewed the capital improvement plan, both the current year '14 that will be adopted and the five years out. We as well went through all of the enterprise funds, including operations and the revenue, full fund reviews on those. And then following that up, as Brian said, we had the public budget forum last Wednesday night. And are there any questions moving forward? We are going to do, again, I'm going to review the budget in components in its entirety tonight. As Brian said, it's told about $205 million. The tentative session that's scheduled on the 20th will set the maximum expenditure ceiling, if you will. We can legally make changes between the 20th and the 24th, however, we cannot exceed that amount. So if there are changes during the month of June, it will be more of a give and take. We'd have to keep that in balance. Again, it probably will be set at about $205 million. Adoption of the final budget in June, again, is a legal requirement. We are posting in the newspaper, the budget schedules, the truth and taxation notice, which happens between the 20th and the 24th. And adoption of the final budget on the 24th of June includes a public hearing on the tax rate with the adoption followed on, the adoption of the levy in June, or in, I'm sorry, July 8th. So with that, are there any questions on the steps to come or anything that we've-
Counselwoman Brazil.
Typically, you have a book with all the schedules and the sources and uses. When will that be available?
Mayor, Councilwoman Brazil, we will produce the schedules with the tentative budget on the 20th. I'm hoping to get that out before, maybe by Monday or Tuesday of the following, not this week, but next week.
Okay, that would be helpful, just in case. Okay, thank you.
As Brian was talking about with the public involvement, the only thing that I'll add here is that the information that was provided is also available, remains available on the website. So there's a video presentation as well as the slides that were covered for the general The process to date has been pretty lengthy. It starts with our mid-year reviews. There are a number of steps that are done internally as far as the department reviews, scrubbing all the budgets, putting the revenue estimates together. By the time we get to this point, we have, with your help, prioritize the budget supplementals, balance the revenues and expenditures, and are bringing forward to you on the 20th a fully balanced budget. Again, are there any questions on the process to date or where we're going? Just as a reminder here, you saw this a number of times throughout the presentation, again, how the budget was developed with the strategic action plan in mind and then again tying the budget supplementals or budget initiatives for the 14-year to this plan. So this is kind of where the rubber hits the road here. The total budget, this is comparative year over year. Last year, it was $193 million, estimated to be $205 for fiscal year '14. You can see the breakdown there. I'm just going to, again, quickly explain, as we put this together, it's using a major component. What you see, the potential improvement district, that is commonly referred to as our contingency. Again, it's a placeholder that we put in the budget each year in the event that we have an opportunity to rise that comes with funding. And so if, you know, we had, an improvement district is probably the best example, which is why it's called this, but if someone approached the city and had funding to do a large capital project or a joint project with this, this provides the appropriation to do this. It is not backed by funds. They would need to bring the source with them. And then the rainy day is the other thing I'll draw your attention to, and that's the $16.3 million. Again, this represents a little more than the three months that's required by the policy, but we are holding it at the 16.3 or it's anticipated to be going into '14. And then the capital projects, I'll mention again, that that does include carryover. The current one-year plan is about $12 million. We're going to see that in detail in a minute, but for the total budget appropriation by law, we have to appropriate the carryover too.
Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Bill.
Terri, just to recap what you said earlier, the operations from '86 to '90, that $4 million, that was $4 million of one-time money?
Correct. And it's mainly the reserves that we set aside for fleet, risk, IT.
Okay. I just, just want to make sure that if someone's listening, that's where this $4 million came from.
Make the math add up, yes.
Mayor.
Joe.
And again, where will that additional $700,000 or that $1.4 million, which will be the second year for the ballpark set aside, where does that sit in this $205 million budget?
That would be part of the one-time, and I'll cover that in more detail in another slide.
But you're reducing, you're ongoing to make sure that that money's available, so is it part in the operation number itself?
It's part of the one-time, correct. It has not been, it has not been committed for ongoing expenditures.
Okay.
Joanne.
Within the revenues that we've been seeing and expenditures, something that I've noticed we have not had the discussion on was the money from the digital billboards. When are we planning on having that discussion and how long have we had those revenues?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Osborne, the monies, I want to say we've not received them that, they were received not so long ago because they had to finish the construction of those monument signs. So it was shortly after those were completed, excuse me, the digital marquise. But so, once those were completed, we received the monies shortly thereafter. In terms of the dollars, they have not been allocated for projects right now. $500,000 is specific for transit and that's the one digital marquee over at the parking ride. The other one is not earmarked specifically for that. Some of the discussions we've had at the council level is, you know, there was kind of a wait-and-see on the transit study that was done with MAG to see where that placed us, was there an ability to use the funds there or not? We're still now working with Avondale, City of Avondale, and MAG, trying to look at what type of transit projects could we consider, can we fund and leverage with federal dollars? So there's been, you know, originally it was discussed to, let's see, do we need to leverage it for transit, transportation, but that's about where we are today. It hasn't gotten farther than that in terms of the other $500,000.
Well, I've never voiced that, that I wanted it all to go to transit, and so that's why I feel like we haven't, as a council, discussed it. And so, you know, it's sitting there and I appreciate, especially with all of the other studies that are going forward, but I mean, my opinion and my feeling was that that money was discussed originally as funds from the Citizen Budget Committee, with the exception of transit, of money being used towards our debt or towards operations of that time. And I don't think the thought behind it was to use it to spend it on something new. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it can go towards the smart thing we did here with Vinita, and that's just my opinion, but we've yet to really have that as a discussion of council. So I didn't know where that money was sitting and why we hadn't discussed it or when we were going to discuss it. So now you know my feelings.
Well, I have to counter that somewhat. We left the one digital sign as not sure what we're going to spend on, so I can't say we wouldn't send it to transit, and I can't say we wouldn't send it on a commuter. And I think we need to slowly decide what we're going to spend on this. I don't want to spend money to spend money right now. I want us to use that money to its best, the best ability we can. And I want to see, and I'm going to me, me, me this time, I usually don't always say council, but this is, we fought for those digital signs and by golly, we're going to, and I do believe, I do remember the vote around the table. So if I may remind you, Vice Mayor, that, yeah, okay, so I just want you to know that money would not have been there if they had gone your vote. So I want us to be careful in how we spend the money because it's one-time money and we need to get that- we need to get that commuter, we need to, transportation is starting to get important. I don't want to be behind the game. And so I want, my personal, we have to be careful. It's there. It's like, you know, you give your kids an allowance and they go out and spend it the first week, and the second week, they came back and said, well, I want some more money. I want to do this. And we need to prioritize what we want to do, but.
Well, and that's to my point, though, is that we didn't.
I think that commuter, commuter.
We didn't discuss it as spending. My point was, it was going towards debt. It was being spent on something we've already have, not new spending.
So you want to spend, you want to pay off the city's debt with that, and is that what you're saying?
My point is, we've never talked about it to that length.
Don't disagree with you, and I do think we have to have a discussion on it, but it's, you know, I'm not ready to throw out it this before the budget.
But we're talking budget, so I'm asking, where was those funds? I mean, that's an appropriate question.
Very, very appropriate. And to be clear, that was not, there was no decision on the $500,000. There were, you know, early discussions, but it has not been vetted by this council. One of the things in adopting this budget, you can still have an opportunity during the year to determine where, it doesn't have to be right of budget time. You can determine where you would want to put those dollars. And, you know, that can be determined before we adopt this budget or even during the year, because, again, we have the upper expenditure limitation, and because if you look up there, the potential improvement district, $35.2 million, that gives us some ceiling there for some, you know, funds like this that, you know, we have that we can spend, spend as council wants. But it could be during the year, it could be done after some of the master plans come in or not, but it is, it's definitely the pleasure of council where those dollars go.
And I just want to see the opportunity that might be coming forth in the future. Bill?
Terry, just for someone listening to this conversation at home, so where is that money? Is it in the bank? Is it in an account somewhere? I mean, obviously, it's in the bank, but, you know, it's not in someone's mattress, but, you know, does it show up on any of these charts in a, you know, we talk about one-time money, and we say, oh, we're going to do $36.3 million of one-time. Is that $500,000 in there?
Mayor and Councilmember Stepi, see that when we present the draft, or the, I'm sorry, the tentative budget that comes before you, the schedules there will include all the fund balance, and it will be part of the fund balance. It's not allocated. We have not, we have not set aside appropriation to spend that money.
Can you put it in red so that everybody will identify that really?
Is it in a specific fund?
The transit money is segregated.
Is it in the transit fund?
Yes, the special revenue fund is transit money, and then the general fund money would be in the general fund.
Okay, all right. I don't know if that cleared it up for anybody.
Terry?
I just have a question. We had the money from the building, the 500, and we're supposed to get an amount every year. Will the money that we get during the year also be listed in the same fund?
The $200,000?
Yeah.
The answer is kind of the same. It's the transit money remains segregated and will be in a special revenue fund, and it will show up as a revenue. And then the general fund money will be posted as a revenue too.
Okay, so they'll both be in there.
I guess what they really want to see is the results of that exact amount of money and where it goes, so it isn't blended. They don't want it blended, right?
And that's much easier on the transportation side because of the requirement to have the separate fund.
Yeah, just know, yeah, okay.
In addition to the components that we've talked about, there are a couple of things that we've had changes to the budget, and I'm going to go over the operational changes as well as some of the capital changes that we had. And then in a few slides, Winnet is going to talk about the non-sworn pay package that's the complement to the union contracts that were ratified tonight. So with that, there were three changes to operations, facility improvements, and I believe that has to do with the City Hall building facade improvement, conferences and training, that's to ensure that there was enough money to do all the subcommittee conferences for the council. And then economic development project was added. On the capital improvement side of things, we did adjust and add a few projects here. The total's about $1.6 million. It does include undergrounding a above-ground wastewater line. There were impact fees, public work impact fees that were not allocated, and so we increased the fleet facility project, and then signage at the city facilities, including both City Hall and Vinita included there. I think upon council recommendation, there is monument sign art project that's being added, and then cap water purchase for fiscal year 14 was also added.
Bill?
Terry, the monument sign art project piece, is that paid for with art money?
Mayor and Councilmember Stepi, yes, that is going to be used from the arts funds. We actually have projects in the arts category.
Yeah.
Yes, and it'll be general fund money.
Perfect, thanks.
That was my question, the last question.
Okay, with that, I'm just briefly going to touch on some of the key components in the revenues here. As you can see, non-construction is up just slightly, a little bit over a million year to year. We did increase state shared revenues, and also the other increase moving forward was from development-related activity. Again, we're seeing the expenditure side of that also. Projected ongoing revenues for next year are right around $67 million. Construction sales tax estimated at $6 million. It represents little less than a 5% increase in revenue for the general fund only. And this is the slide I was talking about that demonstrates the pick set-aside. As you can see, for general fund, we have almost $70 million in ongoing. That does include the transfers in from the enterprise funds for the portion that they pay, such as billing and collections and finance services. With the total uses and the transfers out with the pick set-aside of 1.4, it leaves a slight balance of less than, less than $100,000. Councilmember Pizzillo, did this answer your question then?
Let me see this right. You have the ongoing source of 60, okay, ongoing uses, so if I take 1.4, which should be in there for second year for the ballpark, that gets us at 61.8. That leaves $8 million left, and I assume the other eight's going to the ballpark.
Yes, it's transfers out.
Okay, so, yeah, I like the way this shows, because I can see that we're not spending $9,000,000.4, and I can account for it. 1.4 is going away for our principal payment on the ballpark, and then 8 million is those transfers for debt service and ballpark subsidies. Okay, thank you. This is exactly how I'd like to see it.
Bill?
I was going to say, and in addition, because we have that set-aside plan going forward, you're going to see that this increases your available one-time.
Right. Terry, on the revenue side, and I should know the answer to this, but I don't. Carryover from FY 1213 to FY 1314, from the general fund operating, not capital, I thought, got information, it's about $3.2 million, is that about right?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that carryover money then considered one-time in 1314, or is that, that should be ongoing?
It's one-time money. It becomes available fund balance.
Unused 1213 is one-time for the following year.
Yes.
Okay, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Joe?
Just a real quick, the transfers in from the water and enterprise fund and those indirect costs that are supported by the general fund, has that been updated anytime recently, just to make sure, because we've gone through a lot of changes with the recession to make sure that we're getting those proper amount of indirect costs transferred over to the general fund?
Yes, we did a full cost allocation plan, I want to say in nine or 10, and then proportionally as we've reduced expenditures over the years, we matched that proportionally to the reductions.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in line to redo that plan probably in the next, not next year, but the year after it's coming up again.
Vice Mayor?
So, so at the end of the day, we're figuring, I just want to make sure I've got this correctly. We have $3.1 million that were from operations, correct, that were ongoing monies that will now be turned into one-time funds, because we didn't use them. Am I on track here?
Correct.
Okay. Was there, was it just kind of across the board as to why we came up with $3.1 million extra? Or was there something that really was a reason why there was that much more?
There's a combination of things that are going on, and as we present the quarterly reports, you'll kind of see these trends out. And I'll just speak somewhat generically, the salary savings are always going to be probably the largest component of that.
Salary savings?
The salary savings, just because we, but we have to by law budget for full. We have to budget for all 511 positions, and then anytime we have transition of any kind, then, you know, we have savings that are there. The other thing is, we had increased revenues over what we estimated. And so our construction sales tax is coming in strong this year. We're up about a million and a half, and then last year, it was the same. It was pretty strong. We also saw a peak in development revenue as of late.
But doesn't, that doesn't go towards ongoing, that's not operation money, those were one-time funds. Construction sales tax was one-time funds.
Correct, but it builds up the fund balance. So any revenue that comes in and above what we've budgeted will go, that's positive, and then also any savings we have from operations. And so once the year is over, those roll into fund balance and become available one-time for the following year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think you're okay now.
With that, this is the total operating budget. Again, this is all funds. It does include the enterprise funds. The largest portion of this is public safety, then coming in with, you know, public works, support services, general government. One thing I want to add in here, this is all cost of operations. So again, when we begin the quarterly reviews for the first of the year, you're going to see this broke down into categories, but this is all cost to run your day-to-day government as well as the supplementals that you've reviewed over the work session. The salary category includes all benefits, the health benefits, the retirement, any of your associated payroll tax. And then we have, again, contractual services, which are outside costs we pay for services to the city, and then contractual, which would be your supply line items, your tangible things. Okay, and if there are no questions on that, then Winnet is going to cover the non-sworn.
Yeah, just go ahead and hit it all the way through, so we don't have to wait. There's no suspense here. There is a number missing from when we put this up there. There it is. Oh, it came in last. All right. When we met, it's been a while back, to go over the changes to the non-sworn pay plan. Council's interest were to move employees, non-sworn employees, to the market quicker, because we have 72% of our non-sworn employees who are at the bottom to the first or second quartile in this. And so a desire to move them to market, which is that middle of the range there, quicker, to have a system that is flexible and also legal. And we came back with the quartiles. We are proposing a 2.5% increase to the general fund, which using the quartile pay range would mean that individual employees within the first quartile of the range would receive a 3% increase. Employees in the second quartile would receive a 2.6% increase. Third quartile, 2.4%, and fourth quartile, 2% plus a quarter of a percent one-time. There is a typo at the end, the one-time for employees at the top of the range is two and a quarter. It's not above that, the fourth quartile, so it's two and a quarter. So we are also recommending that longevity be brought back, and that would be for all non-sworn employees and those in the Police Officers Association, but not the local 4005. So everybody but the local 4005 would receive the longevity beginning at year eight. So that also helps those employees who are at the upper end of the range, being paid above market, but then there's that offset for their longevity. So in ongoing compensation, some of these numbers under fire MOU and police MOU will look a little different, because this is the ongoing portion of the MOU, not just everything together. So you've got non-sworn pay increases at $540,000, longevity beginning at year eight for all employees excluding the firefighter local 4005, for $118,000. Uniform allowance for the BCs and DCs at $8,000, so it brings back that uniform allowance for those individuals also. And then you have your fire MOU ongoing, which includes your holiday, your retention premium pay, your uniform allowances and things like that that we went over earlier, and your police MOU, which includes your holiday, your shift differentials, and your ongoing cost from that MOU.
Joe?
Winnet, different concept. I know you've been reaching out to employees of the quartiles and how that works, and I guess the people have been here for a lot of years, consider, you know, maybe you're shrinking a little bit and getting people closer, compression. How's that going in the presentation, and how does that affect compression over time? Because you're giving more to the bottom than you are to once in the upper quart, you know what I mean? How does that all kind of work out?
And it is a culture shift when you move away from steps and go to something like this. So compression occurs when you have a step or a longevity pay plan. In a step plan, you're paying for someone to be here long-term. When you move to a quartile or an open range, it's more about the market and getting people to the market. So there will be that bunch of employees there. Compression only happens in your longevity, because you don't want employees who've been here longer making less than those employees, or similar to those employees who've just arrived here. In the market approach, which is the quartile, that's where we want everybody up at market. We are bringing them together, and so there will naturally be compression if you look at it from a longevity perspective. But this is more a market approach. When we went out and talked to employees, oh, a long time ago, we did employee meetings, about 10 of them, and then we talked to managers and supervisors, the question was more around those at the upper end and not so much about the compression, because it's a different approach. We, compression doesn't happen when you have market, because you want everybody at market. That's the goal.
Okay, so the question of somebody being there three years and somebody being there eight years, is that moves, that what's?
It's just a different way of thinking about it. You're naturally going to have people closer together, because you want them to be paid competitively at the market, not paid based on how long they're here.
Bill?
Winnet, the numbers for the fire MOU and the police MOU look pretty graphic on this slide, and that's probably a poor choice of words, but I think ultimately, well, I don't want to, yeah, out of bounds. Anyway, it, there was nothing in those, either one of those MOUs that those employees got over and above what any other employee got.
What they were receiving in those MOUs were things that they had given up, your holiday pay, your uniform allowances, you know, the retention premium hours are things that they already receive. It's just the ability to retain that when they take time off. So everything that is being brought back, longevity for the police officers, health savings accounts were things that were taken away during the downturn. So everything that's being brought back, or in the MOUs are being brought back. I have seen many MOUs over my years. This is a very reasonable number for a two-year contract. And of course, this is only 1314, it doesn't show the 1415.
And I think that's what I wanted, you know, wanted everybody to hear, was there's nothing in there, even though these numbers look, you know, oh my gosh, they look huge. And if you think about it and say, oh, well, fire got almost twice as much as PD got, no, that's not just the way that the cookie crumbled as far as the numbers, but everything has remained pretty equal between.
And it's because fires MOUs were more ongoing costs, police MOUs had a higher with a 2.5% lump sum. So it was more in a lump sum one-time, which you'll see on the next slide. You'll see, if you want to go to that one. This is where you'll see the police MOU with $142,100, because that's the one-time 2.5% lump sum, whereas fire did not have one-time money. So their whole contract was in the ongoing. And in here, we also have the battalion chief, deputy chief, lieutenants, and commanders receiving the 2.5% lump sum. And the non-sworn, that's for that fourth quartile, and anybody who's topped out getting the two and a quarter lump sum.
Joe?
We had talked a while back, we didn't want to get rid of the exceptional and how they were going to get paid. We're looking at the top 10, 15, whatever that number happens to be. Is that being addressed, or have we've gotten anywhere with that yet?
We're working on the timing of that. As we look at doing all of We're, um, working on the timing of that as we look at, um, doing all of our evaluations in December. And we, we chose to do all of them in December because it gives all of the employees, because we're moving to that new evaluation system. We want all employees to have equal opportunity at exposure to that. We don't want to give evaluations at different times and then we have a disparate impact somehow because someone didn't have enough time to, to adjust to it. So, um, in doing that, we have to get the evals done in December. So then recommendations can be made at the first of the year. So really with that exceptional per employee, it'll go into next year's budget.
Okay.
Because of the rollout of this evaluation, yeah. Any other questions along that? That's really my portion of this.
Thank you.
Oh, hold, hold on one, uh, one, one quick one. I'm sorry. Uh, the, um, education, where is that? Are we still doing the, you know, those that want to go back to school, reimbursement, tuition reimbursement, is that still in there?
Thank you so much. Yes, it is. It's still in there and we, um, I have recommended that we expand it for certifications because, uh, we, uh, are not, you know, there aren't a lot of, of the reimbursements. So well within the budget that we currently have to work towards helping employees with their required certifications that are so important for our city to function. And so we are recommending that those be brought back in, but it's all within the, the same budget that we have. We're not adding to the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if there are no questions on the change, I'll go ahead and move to the five-year capital plan. Once again, I outlined a few of the project changes, um, previously. The total for fiscal year fourteen estimated to be twelve point four million dollars. The five-year total is about forty-five point four million dollars. And we will have with the, um, with the tentative budget and the budget schedules, you'll see a project-by-project breakdown of the, um, first year of that plan because you will be adopting the, uh, first year of the capital plan, the appropriation for that. Uh, this is.
Bill?
Can you go back to her?
You can't even write a note.
I think it's a work session.
Yeah.
I am, I'm having a horrible time drawing comparisons between last year and this year. So please forgive me for re-asking this question, but you and I talked about this offline. This five-year, this is the five-year CIP by type, et cetera. The specific, um, projects you outlined for us in a presentation, uh, on April twenty-second.
Yes.
And you said, here are the projects and here's the money attached. And now we're getting this. At what point are, do we stop? And this is more of a procedural question. Do we stop and say, yes to that one, no to that one, yes to this, move this, prioritize that, move that out two years, move this one up two years, blah, blah, blah? When does that happen? I hate to play the new guy card. I mean, I've been here a couple of years, but I've.
Mayor and council membership, we would, um, we would have liked that to happen on the twenty-second when we discussed the plan. However, moving forward, um.
You missed it.
No, I was there. I don't know. I was sitting in the chair. I'm not sure that I was there, but apparently that's twice tonight I've done that. But any case, um. Well, no, I, I, I think it's, it maybe goes back to what, uh, the vice mayor was talking about earlier was, um, deciding priorities. As, as I've, as I've looked at, at this over and over again, um, and I'm just going to give you off the top of my head for an example because this is what I was able to do while we were firing up the presentation. For example, there is, um, in a memo from the manager two, a couple of days later, we got a, uh, an update that the unimproved median landscaping, um, is, uh, not in the CIP and that you got, someone's going to be working on putting it into the CIP. That was, and if you want, I can read it to you, but that's essentially what it said. Which is great because for me personally, I'd like to see us improve what we've already done instead of starting something new before we get down that road yet. And at some point in time, we need to decide that. And I don't know if it was in the, in the gloss of the presentation that we just sat there and went, mm, yep, that looks good. And we never talked about them specifically or if that was just my reaction. I don't want to paint everybody with the same brush as me, but at some point in time, I think we've got, and it goes back to that transportation thing. At some point in time, we've got to say, yeah, we're into that or no, we're not. And I realize staff is making this as a recommendation and us just sitting there basically says, okay. And now that I look back at it, you know, just that median, unimproved median thing is a project that I think we're working on.
You know, if I may, um. Yeah, this, I'm Ken Kennedy, the CIP administrator. And median landscaping is in the CIP, but it's not until sixteen seventeen, uh, at two hundred and twenty thousand per year. Uh, that's kind of as soon as we could afford it and that's where we place it, but.
Okay. Okay, and that's what I'm saying is we say as soon as we can afford it, but there's other projects that are going to start this year.
Yes.
That aren't even, that, who said we can't afford it? And I, I guess, and I'm not saying that to you directly, Ken. I'm ju- obviously, and I'm looking for the memo as I try to talk at the same time, but.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I got the memo.
Joanne?
Well, I'll just, I understand, I understand Bill's, um, conundrum here. I, I guess, I guess what it is is you're right. We were looking at that and we're going, okay, I, I, I understand what you're, you're putting in front of us. But I guess maybe the actual, let's discuss the prioritization of it and let's look at this. How do you guys feel about it? Those words probably weren't actually used. And so that dialogue didn't begin because we didn't say, how do you feel about that being this year instead of oh six, uh, instead of sixteen? Or, you know, I guess maybe that's what we didn't actually, that direct of a question or didn't actually come up. We, we did, we looked at it. This is what we can afford. This is kind of how staff has put it together, needs and, and demands. But then we didn't really say, okay, well, you know what, um, maybe we want less on arts and put more towards parks. You know, we really didn't have the, the full discussion of.
But you do have, I, I, well, let's go back to when we did the, um, uh, historical Good Year. We did, uh, um, what do we call it? The cushions.
Yeah, the speed cushions.
The speed cushions.
Oh, in north subdivision.
You came forth and you said, I want those done and you got action right away. I don't want to wait to that. This idea that, uh, all of a sudden now you're going through this and looking at this. And when we've had opportunities, um, weekly, we have opportunities, the councilperson to come in and say, okay, city manager, I want you to bring this up at the council meeting. And, you know, I want to go to this direction. And so now, um, you're, you're getting, you, you tend to get in the weeds as we go along. And we can't, how does, how does council do a budget? Uh, I meant council, excuse me, how does staff do a budget? If we don't allow them to present a budget and then each time, because we have discussed, we have at time all of these things off and on. And if you had a burning issue, I don't want me to sound like the, the mother that's lecturing her children tonight, but, uh, if you had an issue that you, as a councilperson, you have that right and you have that time to bring it up. You spend enough time in the city hall, you see the city manager, he meets with you every week. I mean, we have that. And obviously, uh, maybe we need to be trained in how to use that. Maybe that's where the weakness is. But to, to try to do a budget and get within the timeframe and date we have, Bill, there, there has to be some, uh, reas- reasonable process for the staff.
I cannot agree more. However, there is, um, there's a lot of time that goes through this and there's a lot of material to process through. And as we're processing it, it looks okay and then you start, and then this memo came out three days after the work session. At, as reviewed at the work session on April twenty-second, the proposed five-year CIP does not currently contain projects associated with installing median landscapes for roadways that are already built, but have unimproved medians. So three days later, after the issue was brought forward, now we get the answer, there's no money. So at what point do we, do we say, timeout? Where's the money? Now, is it the day that the memo comes out? Is it the next day? Or is it at the next public meeting? And is it just my opinion? And maybe I'm the only one who's off his rocker and everyone else says, just shut up. And I'm okay with that, but if, if I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Yeah, well, I don't want you to shut up.
And I don't want to, so I don't want to be in Brian's office every day going, hey, I got another question. Hey, I got another question, when I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it. So it's not necessarily a burning. It was just an, it was just an example of a, of a scenario that maybe we need to just stop on the slide or be prepared to say, look, the CIP is a big deal. Maybe we need to address it all by itself, go through it item by item because those are big dollars that we're talking about. And we just, twelve million, sure, go ahead, next. And I, I don't think we're giving it a fair shake and I do not want to be in the weeds. And I'm the last guy to, to say I'm getting in the weeds and, and, uh, but this is a big deal. And this is the direction that we provide. So I, I think doing it early, and I'm okay with that, and I'm certainly going to admit, I'm slow on the draw this time around. And I can't remember what happened last week, let alone what happened last year. So, you know, I, I don't want to muck up the works and I'm just kind of asking the question that we, as we go through this. This is different than, than what happened earlier today, but.
Thank you.
I, um, I happen to have had a conversation with the city manager and with Nathan Torres, our parks director, regarding plant replacement because I was concerned that our plants were dying and we were not doing anything. And Nathan told me, is it still true? Okay, then I'll say it. If it's not, I won't say it. I have to get my cue from Nathan, okay? Nathan told me that he was putting money in the budget so that we could replace these plants. So I'm hoping that if we have extra money left over, he'll go landscape someplace that hasn't been landscaped. If we don't have all of them dying. But I know, um, we're trying to take care of it that way. I mean, that's not going to take care of everything, but we're trying to do what we can do. And, and just by talking to them and you tell them what you think and if they.
City manager, would you just tune in on this one, please?
Well, a couple of reflections. Um, one is, is, and you're absolutely correct, that was, uh, stated in the update to council. For any roads that are built but don't have improved, uh, medians now, uh, like Van Buren West Litchfield Road, for example.
Right.
Uh, it is, it is not in the proposed five-year CIP at this time. One of the things that was also in that update is Parks and Rec will be working with engineering and finance to update cost estimates associated with these improvements. And then what we, uh, propose to do is work with the CIP committee to develop a plan as part of the fiscal year fourteen fifteen budget capital improvement plan update. So that's a year out though. Uh, need to be very clear on that. The other is we develop new roadways. Um, any new roadway that is being built, uh, we do have within the five-year CIP, we will have median landscaping considered as part of that, that road construction. So we're moving away from, uh, really trying to move away from the days where we built the roadway, had a median, um, did not have the improved, um, landscaping to now. It's just part of the regular road project that we're doing. Now, to play catch-up is where we're at right now.
Yes, Joanne?
You know, um, a year ago, we had, uh, remember we had that, what was it? Two million dollars or a million dollars that we had to prioritize. And we talked about, Lo Melinda, you talked about Bullard. I talked about the plants.
Right.
The landscaping and, and we, we had some discussion about prioritization of things. And, um, and so I think that sometimes those are the discussions we like to have. And, and you know, not just at budget time or not just, but a couple of times a year. You know, something that's, I mean, I brought it up at the last meeting that, um, when we were talking about landscaping and I said, how come right in front of Vanita, our face, we have, you know, just dirt? There is not even granite, you know? It was like, some of those are prioritizing things that I have no idea what it costs, but can't we have that? Because we never talk about our council, what, two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand? But maybe it could be something in that. And, and so it's, it's like, could we not at least quarterly say, let's have, or half a year say, let's have a discussion, um, a work session on, is there anything that we want to talk about as a council with those small funds? You know, little things that we need, because we never, if we don't put it in the calendar, it just doesn't seem to occur.
Okay, when, so when we did our retreat, did we prioritize during that time?
Well, the retreat was, uh, primarily on tax policy, uh, and the strategic action plan. Um, I do want to though, and, and I was looking backwards, maybe, uh, staff knows the answer. But I know it was, uh, probably a couple of years ago when we looked at what the cost would be to do improved median landscaping. It was in the millions.
It was four.
Was it four million? Okay, you better memory than mine. Um, so it was a big number. And that's as far as it's gotten in terms of prioritization. Uh, question is, is now where do we look at segmentation prioritization, um, of, of trying to get the medians caught up? Uh, because this budget, all it does is it replaces existing landscaping where we have dead plants or, or DG.
Forty thousand dollars.
A hundred thousand.
Oh, a hundred thousand.
Uh, uh, decomposed granite and those types of things is, is what's in there, uh, is all this year. Plus new roadways. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's where we're at right now. So it is, it would be a prioritization. It would be, um, setting aside the funds for a project like that. And really, any projects that, that come to, uh, mind, you know, this being one of the examples certainly.
Well, sometimes, I mean, we, yeah, we see that huge number, four million, we say, we can't afford it. You know, it's, it's out of the question and I agree. But then it's like, okay, segmentation, is there an area that we can afford? And kind of like the, the facade for the city hall. You know, are there things that we can say, you know what? This means more to the image of Good Year right here and it's twenty grand, whatever. I don't know, I'm just throwing up a number. But we don't, you know, we really don't talk about that, that that's something that we really desire, I guess.
Well, by doing those.
Four million, we know is out of the question.
By doing those short meetings, it would eliminate this kind of discussion at this point in the budget. So maybe, maybe we need to look at the schedule. I mean, I'll, I'll go with that because I'll be honest with you, as mayor, I'd rather not see this discussion at this point in this budget.
No, and I'm not asking to have it. I'm just asking the question.
And, and, and staff has got a certain timeframe in which they have to get all this done. So, uh, you know, somehow we need to improve this process so we don't have this happening next year. It's, we're in the middle of it now, so we've got to try to come to terms on this, so.
The, 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 a great example of, of this is the Indian School from three oh three, uh, west of Saraval, widened it to four lanes. That ended up in this year's CIP. It was not in the CIP last year. But we got a presentation about the roadway improvements and all the rest of it. And I remember councilwoman Campbell and I at least said, oh my God, we have got to fix that road sooner rather than later. And then lo and behold, it moves up, moves up forward. Well, that was two people's great idea, but if nobody else on the council thought that was a good idea, at some point, someone's got to be able to say, how did this end up getting priority over, um, let's say the, the project that's the following year, which is, uh, Saraval Van Buren I ten, uh, Van Buren to I ten street improvements to four lanes? That carries over actually multiple years. But, you know, could we use that five hundred thousand to do a big chunk of it now? We never had that discussion, never, not an option. We take a lot of our direction from staff, but we never challenged that, that assumption just so we on our own know. So my question more was about when do we do it? And I, the answer to me is loud and clear, back on April twenty-second. Not, not to change it from this point forward, so.
It's doing our homework better than we did on April twenty-second.
That's part of it, but.
We need to come in with that, but, um, uh, whether, uh, we need to remind ourselves that prior to that time, April first, Fool's Day, let's go from there, that we had to be prepared to do this. Because essentially, uh, this puts a holdup in progress and.
Yeah, we spend a half hour.
For staff to get it done. Um, and via, and CIP projects move, a lot of times we move one up over another. That's nothing even usual in the city. Yes, Wally?
I just need to say to councilmember Stip, in the CIP, it's from three oh three west. It's not Pebble Peak Creek Parkway from Saraval to three oh three.
No, it's from the three oh three to west of Saraval.
West.
To west of Saraval. Saraval is east of there.
Yes, it's, it's good.
It's poorly worded, but it's the right direction.
All right, don't ever ask me directions.
And I don't mean that in an offensive way, it's just, we're going to, it's from, it should be from west of Saraval to the three oh three.
Yeah, if they had that, then I'd have understood it.
Okay, so we, let's, let's bring this to a, let's, uh, bring this part to a conclusion here and, okay. Let's get, where are we? Time frame? Time frame? When's the council here, bottom line, they have to bring their issues to the table? How often do they, so, I mean, we're in this discussion now, let's not just drop it, let's finish it and clean it up, so the staff can get on doing a budget. So, okay, so where are we?
Mayor, I would, I would offer this up. We have, we do have a placeholder this coming Monday, the 13th, and that would be for an additional work session. What we would, staff needs to make sure that we're in concert with this council, what specific areas do you want to look at that evening? Perhaps amend what's in, in the draft budget right now, and it is a draft budget. We really have to, where we, where we do have to adhere to schedules is the 20th of May, we need tentative budget adoption, because then we go into publications, and then we're, by law, we absolutely have to keep that moving on. So May 20th is the day that, that we're holding to for tentative budget adoption. CIP is the same night. If council would, you know, really is up to you, if you want to look back at CIP and, you know, staff behind me, I can't even see their, their views right now. But this is a time, you know, May 20th is when we plan on the CIP adoption, if there is an intent to look at it. But when you get into CIP, there are several moving parts. It's sources and uses. Many of the funds are restricted. You can't spend a wastewater development fee on a roadway maintenance. So it's very tight, and so when staff looks at how we prepare the CIP, it really is trying to get the best bang for the buck. So those that are tightly restricted, I'd say, keep those off the table, you know, wastewater, water, those types of things. Question is, can there be any, is there a, a direction by council to look at some of those areas that could have flexibility? I don't even know what those are off the top of my head, I'd have to visit with staff, but could we bring those back before council to see if there is a reprioritization? But it would have to be this coming Monday, and it will be a long night, but, but we need to get that done, so we can get the budget completed.
Well, I will not keep a short meeting, so don't anybody come up to me, I don't want to get out and have a short meeting, because I hear that a lot. Don't want to be in there all night long. Well, let me tell you, you're going to be in all night long for that one. So, yes, Joanne?
Just, just, quick, I guess, statement for, for going on into the future. I mean, I know dealing with this is, is one thing, but so that we can have these conversations, I would, I would love to see that the council quarterly, you, Brian, saying to the council, "Okay, it's, it's our quarter time, we have this time allowed in a work session for us to talk about, are there any things that are dire in your mind right now that we should address coming into the future, coming into the budget of whether it's the, the $200,000 council money, or whether it's things that we see going into the future year that we want to address?" Because a whole year can go by that all of a sudden, you remember, "Oh, my goodness, we didn't talk about X." And it's a very, it could be a very small thing, but if we could at least quarterly, and if somebody, and, you know, when you ask the question, and we all say, "No, there's really nothing right now," but maybe the next quarter, you've got three people that say, "You know, I want to talk about these speed cushions, or I want to talk about a new garden in this," you know, but we don't have those conversations as a group, so I would, I would love for the future.
Okay, but as, as a group, you have to take each individual council, it's your responsibility to go to the city manager, and you, how often do you meet with the council, so public?
Council minimally once a month, and I do have drop-ins and phone calls along the way as well.
So it is your responsibility as an elected official to take those needs that you have, your constituent needs, to the city manager, so in an organized manner, he is able to bring that to the table. When you get in this point, when you're here, "Well, I want this, and I want that, and I," it's too late. It is too late, in my view. Now, you can, I'll vote me on this, and, and that's fine, and while I'm pontificating, I apologize when I earlier talked to Joanne about the funds on the digital signs. It's not about I-I-I, it's not about the mayor, it's not about me, and I really projected myself totally wrong. But it is a pot of money that we talked about, and we've talked about so many needs, and we talked about specific needs for that one fund. The other one is, you're right, Joanne, it's, it's up for planning. But look where you are on this, and I, I just think we need to bring this back in for this budget. Yes, Sherri?
Just for the future, I, I think kind of a combination of both is actually what we need. We need to bring them to the city manager ahead of time, because us just sitting here going through a list of ideas, we're not going to know. But it would be, it would be really nice to know, like, what did Wally bring, you know, to you? What, what ideas in that last couple of months have people brought forward, or, just, not even in a meeting, maybe just is, is the update.
Actually, he has a list of them, and it can be in a word, he can bring them all to the table. And at that time, if there's 12 ideas in 12, we can, we can sort of do it. But, but I do want us as a council to say, "There is a cutoff date, gang, that we will not leave it till this date, around this table, because it's an injustice to your staff." So, you know, I understand the frustration, and I understand changing your mind, and I understand, you read it and read it, but didn't really understand it, and all of a sudden, you're seeing it, and now you want something done about it. I understand, I've been there. But that's not how we can possibly bring a budget together in the timeframe we need to bring it in, so...
Okay, since I'm the one who raised the whole issue, I do not need a work session next Monday.
You do.
Do not.
Okay.
I do not need one on Monday. My whole question started around, when do we, not should we? But I do have a question that I think Terry answered already, or maybe Ken did. When are we doing the landscape improvements on 16, 17, 15, 16?
16, 17, and 17, 18. There's $220,000 each year.
16 and 17.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Joe?
I think you have to have a work session next week, and here's the reason why. With health insurance, time's running out, you, you, we've got to make a decision on that, one way or the other, by next week. And, I mean, I don't want to overstep bounds of the mayor here, but I think your time's running out on that, and I don't think you have any choice, you've got to have it.
I think we already, that was already a deal.
We already have a work session scheduled.
That's not a part of this discussion, okay? I just want to clarify, that's not what I'm saying. He said he didn't want to...
Oh, okay, okay. I just want to make sure we got it.
I want to get, I want to get everything done before we have our little time off this summer, so we need to get it done.
I do not need a CIP work session.
Okay, that's fine.
And just to be clear, is that the direction of council? So nothing on CIP? You will be getting, again, the detail on that beforehand, before tentative budget adoption, I should say. So, okay, that's clear.
And to make these things just simple, write a list. Write a list. You can write a list every day.
Sure.
You can write a list every week. Hand it, hand it to the city manager, give it to him, he's there all the time, he's available, all right? And, and try to prioritize your, where, your, you know, what you feel, and then he can bring it together, because we can't talk to each other about everything, as you well know. But we can send it to him and let him organize it and bring it back. Is that, is that acceptable? So we don't get here, we don't end up in this spot again. All right? Now, are we ready to go back to...
Yes, if there are no other questions, the one thing that I will add is, when we, when we adopt the tentative, you are only adopting by budget appropriation the first year of the plan. We adopt the whole plan, but again, it, it revolves every year. So what you see for the 15 through 18 will come back before you again in year 15 with some adds, deletes, changes. And we can try and bring that as the first part of the budget, that might help, too. Started off with that in February, March. But again, you'll be adopting the 12.4 million by project on the tentative date. And this is by project type. Again, kind of to ague what Brian was saying, it's a little more complicated than just pulling and pushing the projects. A number of these sources are already, they're very restricted, and they're already tied up either to commitments or to requirements that help development move along at a planned pace. So especially on the development impact fees, and I think if you remember back, that is the, the primary source of our capital plan right now, is from development impact fees. We are not issuing any new bonds. We have some general fund money, I'll remind you that, I think about $2 million of that is committed to an IGA already. With that, I'll move to the property tax levy. Again, this is just a review of what we've had before. The levy for 14 is about, I think it's a little more than $400,000 up. I want to remind you that this is about 65% of this increases from new construction growth. Property tax historical rates here, we are proposing a $1.90 rate for fiscal year 14, and again, public hearing on that, June 24th, adoption on July 8th.
Joe?
Just a quick question, on, on that $400,000, what did, I missed it, what did you say the percentage was new growth in that total?
65% of it.
Okay, so out of the $400,000, 35%, which is 100 and some thousand, is actually for the entire increase for the current, you know, current residents and businesses that are here, so. I think it's important to break that out when you see the $400,000, because it's not all of that. In my calculation, that, that totals 3.7% anyway of the time before, and out of that 3.7%, it's even less than that, because more than 50% of it is actually new growth, so...
Correct. And, and then this slide just demonstrates here on a typical house, what the valuation would be change year over year, and then with the rate change, it represents about a $7 difference annually. Quickly, I'm going to go through the debt, we did just talk about this on the 22nd, too. Total debt payments for fiscal year 14 will be budgeted at right around $25.9 million. This is by bonding type. Largest portion is, largest portion is general obligation bonds, and then this is the source that's used to pay those bonds. Again, it's right around $25.9 million. Utilities are paying for a large portion of our general obligation debt. Are there any questions on the, on the debt at all? And with that, here are the steps to come. Tentative adoption on the 20th, final on the 24th, tax levy on July 8th. And are there any other questions on the draft budget as presented tonight?
Thanks, Terry. Questions?
No, I can go back. Ask a question. No, it's just, no, just, just...
Go ahead, Joe.
Just an op, just an observation by source, when you look at the debt, most of it's either user fees, improvement district where somebody else is paying for it, or the utility, so when you look at, we always talk about to consolidate the debt and to speed it up on the payments. Really, your general fund's about the only option you've got there, so just kind of keep that in mind. It looks like big number until you break it down, and you find out how it's all being funded, and it's a whole different issue.
Well, in summary...
Thank you, Terry.
It's a very interesting council meeting tonight. We're all smiling, and we're walking away from the table as friends, we're all very honest and blunt. Some of you are walking away a little frustrated, but I take that frustration to the city manager and work through it. Any comments for us, from the city manager, any direction, any helpful direction here on, on, you saw what went on tonight? This is probably the first time we've had this kind of discussion, it was kind of interesting for me. How about you? Huh? Okay, all right. Joanne, one question before he talks.
Brian, I, I guess I kind of forgot to ask you at the end of the last meeting. I know today, at the national level, they were discussing the Market Fairness Act, and I was wondering if any conclusions came today, or if, I never heard, or if it's still in discussion.
Pass the Senate, that's all we know. Pass the Senate.
We've still got to get the Senate. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Brian?
You know, budgets are, budgets are a challenge, and there are a lot of needs in the city, and that, that comes up through the course of discussions, and it's priorities, and it's how priorities change, and, and new information comes forward. So it, it is, it's just, it's a work in progress. Some of my takeaways from this is, after we have work sessions, one of the things that, and I did it in earlier work sessions, but not lately, is just to go around and, and ask if, if there are things that we need to follow up on, if it's on CIP, if it's on whatever. Because certainly, we want to also have time to, to come back to you with information, so information helps make decisions. So those are some of the things we're looking at. The other is, we will be having in the fall, a, another retreat, and that's one where you start to set priorities for the, the following year. And so, you know, we did the strategic action plan, which is really big this year, that got a lot of lift and direction force, and we will then be, again, retreating with council coming up probably in November. It'll be tax policy again, it'll also be what's, what's on the radar for council. What do you want us to look at in terms of priorities as a budget comes up? What has changed our assumptions? So there's, it's ongoing, it's not just once a year, and I just want to make sure that that's understood in the public as well. We do have a work session this coming Monday, and one of those items that we're adding to it will be on health insurance. So we've been working with staff to bring back just options, and really, that's, that's what we need to do, options that are affordable, options that you'll have an opportunity to, to discuss and weigh in on, and we want to make sure that you have that opportunity, because it is, at the end of the day, it's a policy direction. It's part of the budget, so as you set the budget, that will have a, a big impact on that. I know we have a couple other work session items as well, off the top of my head, I don't remember what those are, but we were planning on having a work session anyway.
Don't ask us.
No.
But it, but it will not be, yeah, so, so we will be here next week, and then the goal is, if there's any remaining questions, you know, feel free to ask them then, but that's all I have.
Okay, great, all right. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Bill's getting a list, he's already got a list.
He's making a list right now.